They have an area where they go set up. And that seems logical to me for a, you know, we don't, I'm not worried again about the little trailer.
That's, that was originally my recommendation, if you remember back, I indicated I thought you guys should designate an area.
I think we should, but that, again, there would be an exclusion for these little things, but the big motor trucks or trailers that they pull, I just think that's an issue if they start setting up just anywhere.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of issues there, safety is one. So I, I just, you know, I thought more, a lot more about this since we had our last meeting, there's a lot of data going on there, a lot of stuff, but that was just something that's been on my mind and I forgot you brought that up. But I know Crawfordville has an area where they set up maybe every Friday night.
Right. I mean, if you don't designate an area, then, you know, you do have the problem of people just willy-nilly setting up places. And it's not currently an issue, obviously, but...
No, it's not, and it probably will be, but we need to be prepared. Of course, we can always go back and modify, but again, for the big vehicle, trailers, you know, and then the spot that came to mind would be the depot.
Depot and Door Park.
Yeah.
Because you've got to have, you've got to have electrical hookups.
Well, some of them.
For selling.
Yes, some of them have generators on board.
Right.
But again, for, for the Smiths, that's a different type of vendor, they're, they're, they're not professionals, if you will, they're...
Hobbies.
Hobbies.
Retirement gigs.
Yes, so I think we can accommodate both, I just wanted to throw it out there and see what the rest of you thought.
Why would we furnish electricity for these vendors?
Well, I don't know.
I don't think we should, did they furnish your electricity?
No.
Okay.
You can, or you won't.
Oh, absolutely, but...
This month will be horrible.
I'm, I'm, I understand, but I'm thinking if a vendor comes to town, he should have his own.
Well, I think most of them do, the professionals have generators on their, on their trucks or their trailers, the ones I've seen during the festival.
No, a lot of food trucks have to have an electrical source now, just like Festival, Festival, they all get metered and hook into the meters and they're billed.
But we had two that tried, they wanted to set up our place over at the mall and they both had generators that those guys, they came out of Crawfordville, I believe, the thing is I didn't have. Anyway, but they, and they, actually, they didn't like it, they wanted to be busy, non-stop, five, six hundred a hour, boom, done, and it just wasn't enough. But...
But the main thing they were bringing up, and a lot of people who have visited the car since the press release, and the big thing was, if it is a mild winter, obviously, for my parents, they won't be doing it during Festival because they have other commitments, but you get to the end of October, first part of November, they put some nice sunny forty degree, fifty degree day and they want to go out, but then they can't because of this, so...
And the ordinance has draft, it does indicate unless authorized otherwise by the town council as well, so it leaves you room to authorize otherwise, but, you know, the date and timeframes, that's really something for the board to determine, not me.
I have no issues, if they want to go out there in the middle of January on a nice day, I don't, doesn't bother me, it doesn't, I don't...
I think we just thought September was to let people prepare for Festival. And I mean, that's town property, is what we're talking about, we're not talking about private property, if somebody wants to go out and set up on private property, we don't control that, but it would be pretty hard to have people, just random vendors coming as other vendors are trying to set up for Festival.
Yeah, that would be a, a issue. I doubt we'll ever see many others than Gary.
Would you want to narrow it out, like the two weeks surround, one week before the Festival and a week of the Festival then, or?
They start setting up, what, two weeks before?
Two weeks before.
Yeah.
So just preclude October then, or what are your thoughts starts that?
Well, October is, obviously, they start coming in early and a few days before, they start second weekend, ten to twelve.
So like October first through like the, what, twentieth or something?
Wherever that second weekend, the third weekend is.
All right.
Well, how's the board feel about that? The big, the big, and I don't know how to describe it, again, I'm talking about professional operators that come into the truck or a huge truck and trailer, I mean, I think we need to designate an area. I think it just makes sense.
The new park.
I'm sorry?
The new parking lot.
Well, that could be, well, that could be another one too.
It's not public.
But right now, we have the depot and we have the park, park property.
There isn't a lot of parking down there though, is there, to pull in a bunch of trucks?
Well, I don't think we're going to see a horde of them, but...
Well, I mean, again, the ones that need electricity is going to limit.
That, yeah, that's their issue, they're not going to provide it. I mean, if they come, they'll have to have the power, I think most of them will, if you can have any at all.
Well, how do I, how do I determine what constitutes professional, like if I'm putting in words, I mean...
Well, that's a good question, how do we define that?
Is a certain slice truck, or how do I...
Well, any self-propelled vehicle is, is definitely different from a little trailer.
So we're talking like motorized vehicles versus non-motorized, or?
Well, no motorized vehicles, but then you have these giant trailers that are...
Right.
Uh, how do you define it? I don't know.
There aren't any giant trailers that will come, there might be some food, I mean, there, there are several people that have expressed interest in coming to the park because this year, they've all taken a huge hit, they haven't had the activity.
Well, yeah, yeah, they want to come into town and of course, then again, we get back to brick and mortar, you get too many of them here, your brick and mortar people are going to suffer, I mean, they will, they're the ones that pay our wages, pay our taxes, pay, so you know, that's another issue that's always a concern in my mind.
Employ our local people too?
Well, they're, they're, they're what makes Rockville.
There are a lot of people in the county that have food trucks, I mean, they're paying, it may not be town, but they're paying taxes here and they shop here and some of them work here.
Well, I don't know.
So all this is on town property?
Yes.
Which would be parking spots, the depot, which is considered a park, and then the park down by the pool.
Sidewalks too, anything on by the town?
But the town owns half of the sidewalk?
No.
It varies depending on areas, there's different areas, residential versus public and things like that, so it'd just be something you'd have to contact the town for, so we can determine the area.
So if a local business would say, we would like you to be in front of our storefront, that doesn't, that wouldn't intervene with the, the ordinance then?
We don't have an ordinance adopted as of yet, but...
But the potential for it?
It just depends, you know, if we're limiting sidewalks or if we're leaving that up to whoever owns the business, but those are all different area to area, as far as to classify public walks or things like that, so I mean, like G and M variety is different versus the sidewalk in front of, I don't know, I'm trying to think of somewhere that has a sidewalk, Alpha Square.
There's not many.
Right. Right, it'd be different than the sidewalk on Valero, I mean, so it'd just be property, property would be a little different that way. Thanks for Andy.
You do have a setback ordinance on those sidewalks on the square.
Yeah.
That's a whole other issue on the...
On the square?
You can't interrupt foot traffic on the square either with something...
Well, during the Festival, you've always said they can use half the sidewalk, and that's where that came from.
Which half?
Huh?
Closest to the business.
Closer to the business, I believe, isn't that what we...
That's what it's been, yeah. But yeah, I mean, it's, it just depends on where they're setting up, but yeah, on the square, it's closest to the business.
So what are the thoughts on the ordinance, do we want to table it again?
Well, it sounds like we want to do a little more tweaking, you know, because I don't care about the time of the year so much, other than the Festival's an issue and we all know why that is, but other than that, like you said, have a nice day, it makes sense.
Would we preclude out the week before the Festival and the week of?
Just the month of October.
Just the month of October? What's, is that what the rest of the board wants too, or?
Well, it sounds logical, let's hope we have a Festival this year, yeah, it sounds logical.
Then we have the fifty foot from a brick and mortar, are we happy there still?
Well, that would, I guess, uh, but what about the, back to the professional guys, I don't know how to define that, and that's the ones that, that, how do you determine a hobbyist from a professional?
If it's what they do for their wedding, if that's, if that's...
Well, that's a good definition.
Their main occupation.
If that's their main occupation, they're professional, they should go to a designated area, which I think we're kind of leaning towards a park and then the depot, they sound logical.
Also, so once this passes, they have to come here and get a permit, so maybe you guys say, well, here's a set of rules, as an example for my parents, but then you get this professional in here, okay, here's your set of rules, because you've got a thirty foot truck, then that would be on you guys, because they're kind of here to get the permit, then that clarification could be done as that one.
How do we all define them that document though?
Yeah.
I don't have multiple examples.
I would like you, William.
So one thing, I mean, we could differentiate a mobile cart versus a mobile truck or trailer or things like that, like we could do it by size of whatever the...
More than one parking space?
Right, I mean...
That's good.
Does it, I mean, if you can fit in a parking space, that's, you're not really...
A cone of ice can fit in one parking space in that, Jerry.
But that's not, but they're not really, he's talking about like the, the big, the big dudes.
Well, yeah, these big, I can't...
Tandem axle trailers.
Tandem axle trailers that are, you know, twenty plus feet long, you have those, then you have the trucks that are even bigger, interesting.
So we just, you don't want to limit time of year besides this shall not be an operation on public property during the Festival?
Yeah.
Unless you're otherwise licensed to be a TML or whatever.
Sounds good.
The month of October.
Do you guys want to operate during the Festival?
They won't be, my parents will not be because they have other shacks up on the square.
And we don't care about Sunday operations then, so it's okay, just have the time limitation?
It's up, yeah, they want to, I don't...
I don't think Sunday's going to be a big deal.
Okay, so seven AM to nine PM is still the timeframe we want to look at?
Sounds good.
How about on Sundays named...
Summertime doesn't get dark till ten almost.
Yeah.
We're already losing daylight.
So do you want me to change the time or leave it seven AM to nine PM?
I think that's probably okay, I mean, yeah, it stays lighter than that for a few months, but most people are done with their feeding, buying, buying.
Eating is fine.
You shouldn't eat after midnight, you'd be surprised how many people do.
I know, but it's not good.
All right, so you want me to look into how to designate the professional businesses versus...
Yeah, Melissa had the more than one parking spots interesting thing, you know, as a, as a living, as an occupation is a good criteria to...
Okay, so I'll, I'll look into that, maybe come up with some suggestions on that. If they have a storefront in Rockville, we're still okay with no charge for them, or you would want them to have a permanent, just say they want to set up a thing outside their store.
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that, we're not...
We previously indicated no charge, but I, I don't know that that got a lot of attention the last year.
I didn't recall it, but I think if they already have a storefront, they just want to, I don't know why they would, but they want to, sure, why not, they're that crazy, let them go.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, you know, sometimes the storefronts will have set up a booth outside during the Festival and sell food out of it and maybe...
Yeah, okay.
Maybe there's carts out there and they want to have their own thing out there because there's carts out there, I guess, and I don't, okay. And I had not parked within twenty foot of an intersection, and that's for safety reasons more than anything else, and that seemed to be pretty standard across all the ordinances. Not interfere or obstruct, or allow customers to interfere or obstruct passage of pedestrians or vehicles along these streets, sidewalk, parking lot, aisle.
What?
I'll let you finish then, and use, it'd be a yearly permit.
That's hundred, what, fifty and a hundred?
Fifty is what I had.
For a resident of the county, or how's that?
Do we, is that what, fifty as a resident and what if not a resident?
I think that was the last one, was fifty for a resident, a hundred on resident.
Is that what the...
That was for the year.
Yeah.
Out of county was a hundred dollars.
Okay.
County fifty.
And you'd want to leave that, is that fine? Any other changes that you guys would like made?
I hope not. Thanks, thanks, Dick.
Do we have an ordinance as far as dumpsters where they are supposed to be located?
I think we probably do, I don't know off the top of my head what it says.
Sometimes if they're close to you, it's hard to see when you're backing.
I'm certain we do, I don't remember what it says.
Well, nothing should obstruct.
We do, it's supposed to be set at the back of the property, but we've had that issue over here on South Virginia Street with the apartments, the back of the apartments, Virginia and I have a house, so they can't put it behind the house, so they have it at the side.
Anything else on hot dog ordinance, as I call it? Food truck ordinance, mobile concessions?
So you're looking at no October?
Yeah, October.
Or, sorry, or any that would require the use of electricity, like at the park or at the depot, could you just have them designate whether or not they would need that when they come in for their permit and then charge a flat rate?
Yeah, yeah.
They did, where I would want to.
Yeah, so I guess what they're saying is October would be prohibited, the rest of the year would be fine?
And then Sunday, doctor from noon?
That's my thought, just, yeah.
Noon to when?
Noon to nine.
Yeah, same.
Noon to nine, okay. Okay, so I'll make those changes and I'll see what information I can find as to professional businesses versus hobbies, or I guess it's...
Non-professional.
Non-professional. And then, do you want language in there on the electrical then, if electricity is required?
Do we have the ability to provide electric at the depot?
That I don't, I can't answer.
We do, we do at the park though.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we don't have a lot of electricity at the park.
Well, we're working on it.
We do have power, but...
I don't know, charging something, what, ten bucks a day?
I don't know what...
No, no, no.
It's something family.
More than that.
More than that?
There needs to be a connection charge.
Well, if you're just plugging them in, I'm talking about plug-in, you're talking about wiring them up, hardwired?
No, I'm just saying more than that, it's like, I think they can use more than ten dollars of electricity running deep fryers, air conditioners, lighting.
So why don't you incorporate it all in just a flat fee that would address all of that though?
Yeah, but do, do we have provisions to provide that?
I don't have the answer.
I think we need to research that a little bit.
I said, they said use thirty and fifty AM.
Thirty and fifty AM, okay.
And you probably got a hot water heater, air conditioner, deep fryer.
Do you just want to address that if that becomes an issue?
Let's just see how, we can always amend it, I, I don't know.
Well, I'm working on a food truck fryer.
Okay, okay, so you need some, you need some data.
So we could just put in there that if electricity is required, you must contact the town at the time of the request for permit to arrange electricity service.
But I mean, a lot of them will just plug in, but some of them could also just wire, but, I mean, the thought is we're inviting these people to come, and hopefully if they make some money, they're going to make a small donation to the park.
Okay. Sounds like we need some plug-ins.
And we're going to have some, and I mean, I'm not talking twenty or thirty, I'm talking five or six that might need electricity.
Well, okay.
I think a flat rate would be good.
Well, we could always, we could always have some temporary meters and meter to see what they do use, kind of test run to see where we're at, rather than find out we're losing our tail on.
Well, you just have a fee, I don't know, twenty-five bucks?
Do we have any idea what some of the stands, do we have any idea what some of the stands use during, during Festival?
I mean, I can, I should be able to pull up some information.
Yeah.
Just to see an intended area, you know, I mean...
Yeah, and that should give us better information, because they're not even going to...
Do you just want to take the average usage then?
Yeah, they're not going to be operating, for instance, during Festival, they operate nine to six, they'd be operating for only probably three or four, five hours, so we're talking like three, would I say three to eight maybe?
So I can just take the average then of the usage?
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Roger?
Not yet.
Sandy, did you have something you'd like to share or hear from that, given what the job's doing, so? Okay, that was the only person I had requested to be on the agenda, was, did you have something you wanted?
Yeah, me with my mind like a steel trap, did not...
Put him on the agenda.
You would like to do a, sure, you ready? Yeah, yeah.
How's everybody tonight? Rick Anderson, I'm with Johnson Mellow. Your town manager was nice enough to, even though he forgot me.
Don't, don't be offended by that, because these guys know that I'm liable to forget my own name in a minute.
Yes, I have. Yeah, my nickname's Skip, so that's okay. So Rick Anderson with Johnson Mellow Solutions, so we met, got before all the COVID stuff and had a real nice conversation, and he asked me to come back to your meeting, so we do energy conservation programs for cities, counties, libraries, airports, all over the state of Indiana, there's legislation in the state IC-36-1-12.5, it's guaranteed savings legislation that allows you guys to go out and not only cut your operating costs, utilities, but also upgrade your infrastructure, so we look at things like HVAC, plumbing, lighting, we do solar, that's kind of our big differentiator from a lot of other companies, if you've flown in and out of Indianapolis's International Airport here anytime in the last six, seven years, we installed, it's the largest solar field used to be of any airport in the world, someplace in Dubai has put one in currently, so they got a little bit more sun than we got, but, but that's one of our big differentiators, but look at this thing as a, as a procurement method to, again, some of the things that you were looking at potentially doing, but you needed the capital to do it, this legislation allows you to stick it in a program and again, guarantee the savings, so again, we're looking at, at your operating costs, we're not looking at any capital costs, we're not asking you for any additional capital, this is just basically kind of moving your operating costs around while you upgrade your infrastructure. We talked about the guaranteed savings, solar locks in your utility cost for twenty-five to thirty years, that's what they're projecting solar to last these days, and this does not affect your indebtedness, so I'm not a bank and I don't tell you how to fund these things, but a lot of folks would go out and get a third-party loan, we just got quoted the other day on a project, they were in the low threes, we just got quoted by Bank of America, two point three five on one of these projects, I mean, the money's really cheap right now, so, the way this thing works is we do a no cost to the town, we do a utility analysis and we also do a facility walkthrough of all your facilities, and we basically come back to you with a report that gives you some recommendations on some potential things to do, again, no cost to the town of Rockville, and then you guys decide if you want to move forward, there's a, there's an RFQ, RFP process after that, we're working with Park County right now, we're also working with Vermillion County, I'm working with the city of Brazil, so we're working with a lot of folks, a lot of your peers, on these particular similar programs. I gave you an example of a project that we're, that we've done for the city of North Vernon, and also the next thing is an article that was in the Indy Star a month or so ago, these utility companies are scoundrels, so they keep trying to nail us for more increases, and that's not going to go away, the other thing that's, that's coming that you're not seeing right now is they're going to be shuttering these coal plants here probably over the next five to ten years, that's going to be an additional utility rate hike that they really aren't publicizing, but that's coming, so, it's not, it's not going to get better, let's put it that way.
And Rick, if you will, just kind of, some of the things we talked about, you know, you come in and you look at what we are paying for, for our operational costs.
Yep.
And then you kind of make some recommendations on what we can do with solar energy to try to cut those costs down.
That's going to be one of the components. Yeah, correct, but again, I'm going to, I'm going to look at all your facilities and I'm also going to do a utility analysis, so I'm going to get utility, I sent you a utility release form, which allows me to get your utility data from the, from the utility company, rather than you having to pile through all kinds of bills to do that, we do it for you.
Somebody could talk?
Well, yeah, it's interesting, we had our, our electrical provider, IP, that's where we buy electricity, they, they wanted to do a solar project here, but we never could come up with ground that was suitable, so put a, enough solar panels, I can't remember the acreage, we needed a couple acres, maybe three, I don't remember exactly, but you're strictly solar, I mean, that would be the way to...
Well, that, that's one of the components, again, we talked about, we talked about the PVC plumbing, lighting, anything that you're paying utilities on that we can influence by being more efficient with upgrading your systems, solar's a component of it, and we're looking at solar on a particular location for a site, we're not looking at some of the utilities...
Doing the whole town.
Some of the utilities want to take, you know, three hundred acres, no, that's not what we do, we, we put it on particular sites.
Well, I know the, the waste park plant has the biggest electrical every month.
And that's one of the...
That's a little bit opportunistic.
And there is a little ground down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking at, I mean, if you can save money, it's a good idea.
So maybe that's something that Rick wants to talk about and try to explore a little bit differently and maybe we bring something to you later, Dick.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good. Rick, do you have another course of action that you...
No, all I need is just, you know, some approval from you guys to move forward, and then again, I'll send a utility release form to your clerk who can then sign it, I don't know who needs to sign that, okay?
Hi, Randy.
Hi, Randy.
Hi.
I'll give you my card, and if I can give a card?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great, I'll send a utility release form to you.
Okay.
If you can, it's pretty self-explanatory, if I can just get those back from you.
Okay.
On both gas and electric.
Are you doing, working, you're supporting with Park County, because I think I just received one for them, so, some information.
Yep, I'm working with them currently right now.
There you are, sir.
Thank you very much, okay, thanks. Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I've already, please.
I've had a couple things.
Sure.
You guys had previously indicated a desire for a weight limit on Howard Avenue, I don't think we've passed this previously, because there was some confusion as to whether it's going to be a ten-ton limit or a fifteen-ton limit, so I have one that has a fifteen-ton limit on Market Street, well, it goes from, let's see, intersection of US 41 and Howard Avenue to the intersection of Howard Avenue and Howard Street, then proceeding south on Market Street until the intersection of North Market Street and US 36, that any motor vehicle traffic shall not exclude the posted weight limit of fifteen tons at all times, violates this ordinance may be charged their Class C infraction with fines imposed up to five hundred dollars, and it's set up for approval, we previously tabled it to edit to fifteen tons from ten tons, so here's one at fifteen tons for the board's consideration.
One with a motion for press release.
I'm ready.
Second, on favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Do we need to do a same date?
No, because we tabled it and we had it at a previous meeting.
We got the wiring on Market Street?
Yeah.
So we're good?
You'd already done the restriction advertisement?
So it's fifteen ton and we'll get the signs, I can't remember if we ordered the signs, we're waiting on the signage.
I think you did. I think you might have, because I think you emailed me back saying that you'd done that.
I think they shut me my front yard door for a couple days, I think you got them already.
We already covered the food truck ordinance, if you recall, there had been We already covered the food truck ordinance. If you recall, there had been a tax abatement discussion and approval for the housing project going on outside of town. So we need to formally adopt that. So I have a resolution adopting that abatement for them. I believe it was for 10 years. Is that right, Cindy?
Well, first of all, they need the ordinance for the abatement procedures.
Sorry, so there's that for Randy to test.
This is, this is what needs to be improved.
Oh, that's what we need first.
Because we couldn't find documentation that Rockville had passed that and all the other pieces and parts of the whole tax abatement thing.
Well, I guess I'd ask you to table that until I can get it drafted for your consideration as far as the abatement. When's your deadline, Cindy?
Well, the documents you were reading, that has been sent to you. So if there are other, if there are any requests for tax abatements, they have to sign that agreement that you have up on your laptop first.
Okay.
And then they'll send you the SB 1 forms and all of that. But in order to make sure we have all our bases covered, the ordinance that Nick has in his hand has to be passed.
So what this does?
Do we want to make a motion that I sign it as soon as he looks at it?
I mean, we, I've sent the blank agreement to New Hope already for their review because they'll have to have their legal team look at it and then they'll fill it out and get you. So I think you have a little time. I just want to make sure you have what you need in place to process that when their request comes in. And this was originally started in 2015 and we found everything but one ordinance.
Well, good for you.
Between the town and the county.
I guess I'd ask you to table it so I can draft something to meet that effect. I apologize. That was an oversight on my part.
Well, as Lily suggested, can we go ahead and once you have?
Fix it.
Right. It just sets up as follows. All requests and petitions for real or personal property tax abatement in the town of Rockville will be reviewed and considered by the town council, I would assume is how you would want to handle that. Or, or kind of redevelopment commission is what the county used. That they'll review all abatement requests and make a recommendation as to whether the abatement should be granted. And the council looks to allow redevelopment to make that request. So you could do it that way. It's have redevelopment. They'll make a recommendation to the town council as to whether they should be granted. Is that what you're asking for, Cindy? And that they'll establish procedures for considering reviewing abatements. It shall create general guidelines for public concern, for the public concerning abatements. The applicants for abatements provide the county with a town within abatement calculation agreement for real property and personal property prior to final action by the town council on it. Such agreement be substantially the form attached, but may be modified by the council, which I believe is the form you have here. Is that right, Cindy?
That is for the applicant, the person requesting the abatement to fill out, the one you have on Market Street.
Okay. So I guess what she's asking for is granting of passing of the ordinance allowing for a redevelopment commission to be the review mechanism for abatement procedures and make a recommendation to the town council. Is that right?
I mean, they, they could choose redevelopment or they could keep it within.
Right.
Well, is it just for this project or for any project?
It'd be for any project.
This will be all future.
So you could have is the town council be the review organization for that?
Well, we have representation redevelopment, but we, I don't think we want to give up our, I don't know.
They'd just be making a recommendation to the town council.
We still have a plan to set.
Develop it first and then come here.
And then to the town council.
Oh, good. More meetings. But no, I'm okay with that. Well, I moved it once Nick updates the document as needed. And he's okay with that, that we have Lily sign that to keep the project moving.
Sure, second.
Yeah.
Aye.
Sorry about that, Cindy.
Can I have that back? So. Thank you.
By the way, a couple of other updates. We've been looking into some property agreements in the area. The, one of the properties we looked at has expressed their desire to move forward with the town as far as possible acquisition of property. So negotiations are ongoing as to that. And it sounds like that's probably going to proceed forward, but I'd just like to get the blessing of the board to proceed forward with the site evaluation through the state and to use a wise partnership, Park County, as a mechanism to help with that.
You're, you want a formal, what do we need, a formal motion?
Yeah, approval for me to make those arrangements. I don't have the capacity to bind you.
I move that Nick move forward the mentioned property.
Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
I don't have the power to bind you to that, so you have to bind yourselves.
Okay. Darn.
Multiple town ordinance violations are pending. If Randy's addressing that, I'll leave that to Randy. We did have a couple notices that will be sent out as to properties around town. My recommendation, I guess, is that anything that's rezoning or variance or things like that be sent through planning and zoning, not the town board. But I don't know if that's what the town board would like or not. Because we have a couple that want variances and we have a spot also wants to rezone the zoning map.
We still have to prove it, even though zoning does.
Right, but the proper procedure is through the Indiana code is to go through zoning first.
Well, yes, it is. That's what I thought. So they still have to do that.
Right.
The one that we're working on for the property that's going to be rezoned, we had our last conference call meeting.
Right.
Didn't we say that once did whatever needed to be done, we voted to approve it so it can just come to the council?
Right, that was at the last zoning meeting. But there's two other properties. One's a variance and one's, or actually they're both variances.
Were they all the same project or these different?
They're different projects.
I feel about those South Market.
Right, so there's actually three other ones besides South Market. There's a private individual wants to rezone their map designation.
So they can refine it.
Right, and then there's two others. There are one variances done. So those all would go through zoning first. I just wanted the board to know that those are out there. They're going to go through zoning and they'll be before the board at some point.
Should we be concerned?
No, it's all good things.
I feel better.
There's nothing that would be alarming to the town in my view. It's just those are on the horizon and coming our way. Let's see, anything else? Debt collections are ongoing, but on the prior projects. But right now, we're not able to do a whole lot as to ongoing accounts with the governor having extended his order.
The governor.
So we're subject to that as well. But that's everything I have.
Was that through the end of July?
August 14th. But I anticipate he may extend it again, is my guess.
So what's, what's this under you? It's under legal counsel waiting on Brock for rate?
I was adding, I've removed stuff on there so that I don't forget not necessarily that Nick's bringing it to the attention of the meeting. So Steve Brock was supposed to get me some updated information on the rates. He had a current rate incorrect on his proposal. So he emailed me, I believe it was Friday. Probably you and somebody else on that.
Probably Joe.
But he's supposed to be updating those rates.
Okay.
But did Nick just give you what you needed to advertise?
I don't have the, I don't have the right rate.
What I gave her was the notice part, but what you would do is attach the proposed rates to that notice. And I don't have the proposed rates.
And I don't either.
Well, wastewater is down to 1%. And the appropriation report of what we budgeted are down to 1% left. So yeah, we really need to get this.
Assuming Steve sends whatever their proposed rates are, we can attach them to what I gave.
Well, it's hounding, hounding.
I thought he was supposed to send you something like Friday in that email.
The email said I would have it, but I did not get it Friday. I did not get it today.
Okay, so we're, we're.
So Randy has the notice. All we need is the rate proposal.
But you have a more authoritative voice than me.
Don't, don't we need a public meeting?
I will advertise one.
I will advertise it.
That's what the notice I gave her was, the notice for public meeting.
So maybe a month from now, we might be able to.
You just have to advertise it 10 days in advance of the meeting. So you may call a special meeting, I suppose, if that's.
Oh, yay.
Which if you do that, there's a couple of other things I'd like to put on there too.
Oh, good.
He volunteered to come over, went through some of that with us, didn't he?
During at the public hearing, I think he was going to make himself available.
Okay, if you want. They're just numbers.
He said he'd be happy to explain.
Okay. Well, you guys seem to like talking about numbers, so.
Well, yeah.
Or you and Steve can we talk about them?
As a watch or something.
Well, our revenue is this and expenses is this and holy cow, we got a problem.
But anyway, so we have the notice component. We just need the rate part now. And same with a lot of the land change parts. We have to give notice of a meeting. It's just what I'm saying is instead of doing it as a town meeting, let's do it as planning and zoning for the other ones that we haven't looked at on yet.
Okay.
So she has both those notices now.
What about some of our jumper properties? Where's that?
There's a lot of pending court litigation. I don't, I don't know if Randy has a grasp on how many we have pending, but everything's been kind of backset due to the court backlog.
I thought, were you talking about the auction? Aren't we supposed to be?
Well, we were going to have an auction of some of our excess property, but we have some property. We bought a tax sale and.
Right. I thought you were talking about the ordinance violations.
Well, not necessarily.
So one of them indicated that they're not willing to pay for anything as far as a petition to quiet title. And they don't want to go forward with a tax sale certificate transfer without the quiet title included. So that's one of the properties. And the other one, we just have to advertise accordingly as to the property being available.
What's on the property that this issue is with?
It's an abandoned house that was acquired at tax sale by the town that we thought a neighboring property owner would want the property.
They do, but they don't want to.
But they do, but they don't want to pay the petition.
How much is the petition?
Usually those cost around $1,500 to do that.
We don't want an abandoned house, guys. What are we going to do with that? Tear it down?
Tear it down.
If we eat the 1,500, they're going to have to do something with the house if we start citing them for that.
Right. They would have to do something with the house or we'd start citing them for that.
Are there any blank grants out?
So that's what Cindy and I were just talking about. Those were suspended about, what, two years ago, you think?
No, that's a big program back online. Then COVID happened. They suspended that. Probably did water wastewater.
So we're not.
For the time being.
Right.
But they opened up the historic preservation grants again.
Okay. So she has more grasp on grants than I ever will. Nor don't want to. But so apparently that grant's suspended.
So we're still.
There is some interest in the Howard Avenue property.
The one that we bought and tore the house down on?
Right, it's empty.
And didn't we also say we would share half of the cost of that?
Right, but they don't want the cost on the, on the petition to quiet title. So we'll have to decide how to move forward on that or not.
Well, aside now, I mean, I, we don't want another, we don't want a lot of the house.
Right.
They kind of know.
And I'll tell you, it's easier to sell property if you've already quieted title in it to the town because then you're just transferring a deed instead of a tax deed that has to go through that process. So you guys could quiet the title on the property, have it free and clear, and then it'd be easier to market the property.
We don't have to sell to the person.
You don't have to sell to that particular person.
Let's move.
It's just not something that falls in my normal duties under.
And I need a motion?
My agreement with the town, so.
I move. We.
Acquire the title.
Acquire the quiet title for said property.
Is there a second?
Yes.
On favor?
Aye. So you want me to move forward with petitioning to quiet title and you'll reimburse for expenses and the cost included on that? Okay. Well, it's just something that I don't normally do under my contract. So if you're doing that, it's in addition to that.
What about the property on Howard?
Howard Avenue, same thing. We don't have a quiet title on that. We just have a tax deed on that.
Why don't we have a title?
Well, it's the same process. You acquire a tax deed. We got it through tax sale.
Well, let's get title. Well, we should. I mean, we, shouldn't we?
Well, everything that we got through tax sale has to go through the same process. We have a tax.
Well, we invested $22,000 in tearing the house down.
Right. Well, it's just, you guys own the tax deed to these properties. If you want to be able to get insurance on them or a mortgage on them or things like that, things.
Or develop it for part.
Right. You have to go through this process. It's usually a couple month process.
I think we have.
We just haven't done it because we had the assignment to us. So we were just kind of holding on to them at that point.
I have that one here.
Well, you can discount them. You can do it to it one time.
Okay, carbon paper.
Carbon paper.
What we were seeking to do was to assign them to somebody else and have them go through that process.
Right, but I'm not sure.
And you have that option to do that.
I'm not sure we want to do that with that property.
Not down on Howard.
By the way, the property on Howard, we need to get it cleaned up a little, I think. Jeff, maybe get the stump ground out and get some limbs and.
Grass was getting a little bit long.
Because what we've done with the other properties is we just signed the tax deed to someone else.
We had fires in Aria. Can I move on the Howard property that we get to have Nick do the same thing and?
Sure, second.
Same thing on both properties, Nick will do, right?
Aye, yeah.
So take care of both those properties. There's the third property on Martin Street. Do you just want me to advertise that for the neighboring property owners then?
Sure, I think it would be okay.
Or do you, because that would just be assignment of the tax deed then?
There's not one there to be done.
It's, it's a very small lot to.
He just wants to, he has the other two, so.
Go right ahead.
So advertise it and then see where we go from that.
Correct.
I don't think we have any other properties we currently own.
The other guy may or may not still get that, but you know, that was from a while back, so.
Sure. Well, COVID hit and all this kind of got put on pause as far as priorities. So we can advertise that and then the other two all get us clean title on, so we can do whatever we want with it then. Thanks. Sure, yes.
Did you or Paul get a chance to comment a second? That's why I kept putting her on, I'll be able to.
She's out. She's on vacation.
Do you have a calendar for today?
Vacation?
Vacation. As I said, she's supposed to be on vacation.
Is Karen going to get to go home from the office if I'm on vacation?
I'm done. I'm done. Okay.
Okay, so my apologies. My minutes weren't attached. Sorry about those. I'm hurrying, I'm not going to lie. There actually is just the one, June 8. I don't know, because of one, I just kind of looked down through there. That was the biggest one. There, the just of them are really executive sessions that no other topics were discussed. And there's no documentation or information in there, but there are, I believe, six meetings starting May 13th to the current.
I guess if I sign it, it's a property approved too.
What would you make a mention of?
Yeah.
Oh, those documents.
Do I need to sign it? Oh, sorry. None of these. This one will be the first one that I'll have on.
Oh, let's see. We're here. It was Chris second, the special report, right here. It's that Brock. Yeah, I remember that. This one here.
Sorry.
Okay, that was, that was, wow, that's a big one there. And this one.
I like to touch the agenda because I forward it.
Okay. I remember all those. I move. We pass three minutes as presented.
I'll second. On favor?
Aye.
We got a fourth that passed the minutes as.
Yeah, three.
While we're doing, while I'm on it, hand them to you.
Yeah, just do that.
Thank you for saying that. I'll just do everything else this year, right?
Yes. Claims ended month of June at 4/27/9/62/33. And then I've got the first 10 days here of July at 1/92/9/35/80. Show the reports on those. If you have any questions.
Oh, gosh, I know. I don't know which one it was, but I was quite excited. I saw we finally paid off the fire truck. We've had payments on for five years. So that brings up another topic. We set up a fund. I don't know if it's still. So that brings up another topic, we set up a fund, I don't know if it's still on there, the 2035 fire truck fund, we called it, we never funded it because we were busy paying for the fire truck, but when we had this fire truck issue come up five years ago, we thought, well, jeez, maybe next time we could be more prepared. So I, I don't know if we need to move on tonight, but I'm just saying we should probably discuss that in our budget discussions, which we probably will be having soon.
Do you need the schedule?
To start funding, you know, annually, some amount of money for a fire truck, it's about 20 years, I think, is what the rotation's been, and that one was, what, 319 or something? It was a lot of money. So, yeah, good news, paid it off, bad news, going to start funding. Gosh, I don't know, everything was pretty normal to me. Oh, I guess this is Randy, Randy, what's the Wolfco, Wolfcom Enterprises?
That's our body camera contract.
Oh, okay.
We do an annual.
Okay.
But I don't think they.
I know I've seen the name, I just couldn't remember what it was.
I think they sent us two years worth of billing on there, and I tried to clarify if that was last year's, that maybe we did.
It is two years, yes, year four and five.
But I think that, I think maybe they billed us two years and it was only supposed to have been one.
Okay, yeah, it says year four and five. So they did, okay. Yeah, I don't know. I circled stuff, I must have just. Bond payments, blah, 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 water, South Market project expenses, not a lot there, really.
There hasn't been anything coming in.
Are they doing anything?
I don't think so.
Is that good or bad? Yeah, all right, well, I, I see Surf Pro got paid, must have cleaned up bills and mess, and I see, I saw the Beech Trees, that's kind of exciting, Beech Trees are beautiful trees for the park. So I move, we approve the claims for July 13th and the end of month of June.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second?
Yeah, I second.
Oh, yeah, billing adjustments, it looks like we had two separate pages there, the 104244, this is kind of a miscellaneous, there's some budget billing transfers, we're kind of, we're getting a handle on the budget billing, I've got that with an application there and a couple here. There's transfers, looks like a security light charge that we reversed for the first set and the second set for 153791, there's all cool titles.
Is there a third set?
There do.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, okay, so we have, kind of done a little bit of an update on the budget billing program guidelines. It's always just been budgeted for the electric, I'm not really sure why, but I would like to move forward with doing the electric, water, and wastewater, so it makes a little bit more sense to people's bill, they can understand, a lot of them don't understand that they still fluctuate quite a bit, means that you're only budgeting electric. So there's no real changes with the application language, just that we'd like to do electric, water, and wastewater, so that when you are on budget, you are paying an average of overall expenses, not just one or the other. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
Can you make a motion to approve that?
I move.
Application, please.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
These will all be completed for budget to start in August. I had a request by email to close Shadland Avenue on Saturday, August 29th, residents will be moving, they will have a large moving van.
Stat.
Semi to come in, so they were just asking for permission, it is a Saturday, they chose a Saturday to do that, so it won't interfere with school or anything, so.
No, their house, they sold their house.
Yeah.
So I, I told them that I would take the information and, you know, ask the board that, go ahead and get approved for that one day, and I'll kind of.
Jay and her.
Keep updated with you, too, but, so that'll be on Saturday, August 29th.
I move.
If that section of Shadland can be closed.
Okay, we need a motion?
We're going to close the road.
Okay, I move.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, just out of the blue, it's like, well, how, what's the odds of this going to happen, we should probably take a ban against this. Oh, they're duplex, they build up there, partway.
Okay.
Do, getting older, downside.
I'd like to get ready to pull out a tent.
Okay.
I don't know.
Um, okay, there's, I also have a quote for auto pay through Keystone.
Yes.
One-time setup fee for auto pay is $2,000.
So what's that mean, auto pay, people, people, it automatically deducts it from someone's account?
Yes.
$2,000, send it up?
Yes.
Darn.
I've had people asking, you know, since last year, really, more and more people are wanting to do it.
It's a good way to get it.
So my, you know, I've just been telling them now, you know, I'll bring it to the board for approval, and see if, you know, we will basically have a separate file each month for those, it's kind of an automatic payment arrangement.
Sounds good, most companies have it, we're, we're utility, law utilities have it, we should, we should have it. I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this two grand every year for this?
Yeah.
No, it's a one-time setup fee.
Is there an amount of charge for it, like with the credit card payments?
No, no, there's no additional, there's no, there's no maintenance or anything, as soon as we, as they do the setup on their site and we have access to the program, then that's all that they do. Okay, banks, all banks are May, balance, good. There's the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is the one for, the new one, Bank Seven, for the Oprah grant on the back still, so, but, I'm sorry, I think that's one there.
Okay.
You can put an urban grant out if you want.
Yes.
Make sure I didn't miss one, because that's Bank Zero.
Zero, there's three, where's two?
Well, we have five, make sure there's not another one in there, I think that's all, Fountain Trust, Bacon New York, First Financial Trust, these are all, it's all here, Fountain Trust.
Okay.
So those are all May banks.
And that's always supposed to tie to the fund report, right?
What's that?
Well, when we look at that balance, where are we supposed to tie that to? Look, I used to know the answer.
One here, it's usually the.
You're getting old.
The top.
I know.
Usually this will tell you your balancing amount.
Yeah.
Because they're on the front, like here, what's that first page say on that one?
Uh-oh, it's.
Yeah, like this one, it's just our money here, because we haven't done any moving of the bank money.
Right.
So you've got your net balance and your record balance with zero.
Well, you reconcile, what I'm saying, you reconcile this statement.
We reconcile on the computer with the Keystone system in order to print those items out.
Okay, I move.
Is there a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the only other thing is, is I have somebody possibly moving into town asking about whether we have a solar policy or not, they are going to either build a home, or if they buy one and remodel, they are wanting to do solar panels, they brought me a copy of like Duke's renewable energy policy, I'm not aware that we have anybody.
We did something, I thought, with INPA came out with some policy, we adopted it, I thought.
I thought that we could really have a home that was solar dependent in town.
What, what, Steve?
Solar dependent.
Seems like there's something regulating it, because we're worried about the kickback onto the system, but I don't remember exactly what it said.
Yeah, well, it would have been probably the last year of the previous boards of, what was that, 18? I'm thinking the spring of 18, roughly.
I just, I don't remember what it said.
I just, it, I guess, do I need to know anything? Is there anything in place that they can or cannot do that?
Well, there may be, that, that's, that's what I'm saying, that there's something there that we voted on, and I don't recall exactly what it was.
If it was spring of 18, it's not that we have not voted.
Okay.
If it was before 2016, possibly.
We'll have to look into it, I guess, is what you would tell them.
But I mean, if they're wanting to do that move forward, don't we need some type of policy or something?
We think we have one, I just don't have a, it's not online, I don't have.
Well, yeah, it dealt with them putting power back into our grid, is where it was.
Because if they're putting it back in the grid, it could have an electrical shock towards people that are maintaining the grid.
Yeah.
And we did that, I just don't remember what it said.
You remember it, too?
Yeah. I didn't draft it, they brought.
No, they, it was, yeah, it was pre-drafted, they just brought it, said, there's a lot of communities are doing this.
Who did that, INPA?
INPA did.
Right, it is pre-drafted.
So you would think they would probably have it.
Can we ask them to look back? I would think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I stand up with all the communities, say that they.
They put it in place, I don't think we did, or they asked us to put it in place.
They brought our form and asked us to adopt it after meeting.
Yes.
But I, yeah, I didn't draft it, so I don't have a copy.
That's all. Okay, thank you.
Good job.
So anybody have any old business?
Guys, I, I.
New business?
Well, old business, can we just briefly talk? I know last time Brock, Mr. Brock, we talked about the remaining funds in Howard Market, and around two, a little over 200,000, and, and we talked about, perhaps we could use that for South Market funding, and I believe Steve said we'd have to, you know, see where it came from, put it back in those funds, and put it back, well, the majority of that money came from, and I should have made a note about this a month ago, the majority of that money came from the utilities. I, I suppose we put a document together, and I can look at my old financial documents and, and come up with how it was brought into that fund, and, and get with Randy, and we can decide, okay, well, we'll put it back there, and then we can turn around and maybe use it to help fund South Market. So that's one thing, not too much new business, you know, talk about the rate, Steve's coming out.
Do you think it was moved from each utility?
Well, it was.
Just a portion from each of them, because I can probably research.
Well, we were funding it at about 70, well, we did 125,000, of course, we also, I think we did 125 for all four utilities. Then we were doing 75, I'll have to look, I've got the schedule we used, one, they actually probably in the original documents that we submitted to the state of Indiana, Indoc, because we had to show them how we're going to come up with money, so it'd be their Guess I did. New business?
Yeah, any mail? Do we want to set a date for a budget work, Shaw?
Golly, I don't know.
I mean, we can wait till August if we want to.
Well, I think we should probably wait until maybe after we get through the Brock, Mr. Brock and all that. Hopefully that'd be done by August somewhere. Our first meeting in August, our regular meeting is, would be the, are we the second or the third, what's the second?
Second.
So that's on the 10th of August. So I would suggest that the 10th of next month, hopefully we have gotten through, that isn't that far?
Well, if I get, if I get the information from him, I have everything that I need to come out and advertise, so we can have everything ready and set some forward by that meeting, at least.
Okay, so after that.
But we have to have a, we have to have a public hearing.
But I'll just set it for the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
As long as she does like 10 days in advance of it, then.
Which if I can get it from Steve, I'll just do it as soon as I get it.
We may want to.
27th is the last date of my time.
We may want to do it, not on the same day as our meeting.
Well.
It could be a long night.
It could be.
Usually rate discussions draw larger crowds.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to say after the 10th, then we could have our budget meeting.
Okay, we'll set it then. All right, Jeff? First order of business, I'm going to interrupt you, so did everybody look over the handbook? Are we finally ready to adopt that?
Please.
I shall move.
Please. I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Nick, thanks for getting eyes on that.
Sorry it took a minute, that was a lot of reading.
It is a lot of reading, and unfortunately, I have a lot of things that you needed to correct type of wise, and I apologize.
That's a lot of drafting, too.
Yeah, so, thank you for that.
Yep.
Scratch that off. First thing on my agenda is I have invoice number one for Graves for 176, 199 for the sewer rehab, I have copies of the invoice here, along with payroll breakdown. One thing that I didn't get from him was a detailed copy of the construction cost, but I think that will probably be forthcoming, and I'll share with Cindy as soon as I get that from him. But if you'd like to take it, I'll add a paddock in there. What the process is going to be, after much debate and discussion is, I think that Andrew will, will forward these invoices to me and Roger, Roger will give him an eyeball, and say, yeah, Jeff, these look really good. At that point, I'll bring them to the board for approval, and once you guys approve them, we'll kick them to Cindy and Randy, so they can do their thing through Oprah. And I think, did he get you the wage determination? Still waiting on that, okay.
So that's coming from Graves, right?
Yeah, that's coming from Graves, they have about four more holes to dig, I think, and we've already started the CIP process, they're televising, they're cleaning out, making sure that, that the pipes that we're going to do the CIP with are actually in good condition to do that, so it's just a final step verification before we're actually doing that. So we're rolling right along on it, that's, that's a good thing.
Jeff, can I just comment on that invoice for Randy saying?
Yes.
If it's okay with the board, we're going to go ahead and pay that out of the town's portion that she already has access to until.
But until we get the, yes.
Which, I'm sorry. The invoice number one.
Because now I'm getting emails, so who's going to actually email me a bill? I'm getting copies of stuff, so.
And then you'll get it from the council.
Everything that comes from them?
What are you getting?
Well, I think it's toward.
So what's the procedure as far as the patches we, they made, like on Erie and?
They're going to have to come back and they're going to have to asphalt them, they've got gravel down, the process is they have to replace in kind, walls there is what they're Walls there is what they're going to have to put down. So if it's pavement, they have to put in pavement. If it's concrete, they have to put in concrete.
And I'm sorry, but where, how far along are they?
Uh, I think they've got about four holes left.
Okay, I heard the four holes, so they only have four?
Yeah.
Wow.
So we're getting, we're getting close, I imagine.
Now, they have got the, the, the headworks at the plant redone?
Yeah, that, they haven't started on that yet.
They start that, the plan was the first portion of the work will be finished by the end of July, and then the second portion should be done hopefully by the end of August. That's the plan, or that's the hope.
Okay.
So they're rolling, and, and I imagine the heavy equipment will probably roll out of here within the next two weeks, and then it's just a matter of doing the CIP stuff. Uh, I'll talk a little bit more, I'll circle back to the sewer because I've got some things tied into that. Uh, so I guess you guys will need a motion to approve through the town's portion on that.
I'll move.
Second.
Call my favor.
I.
Brandy, Park motion, and Melissa second.
For the payroll for this?
Steve, that's what.
Go ahead, put your stuff away, and I'll get you.
Well, I get copied on them, but I don't know what they're, what's being brought for an approval, so this is actually the original invoice to be paid.
One seventy-six, one ninety-nine.
And this is it. So see, these were like two separate invoices that were sent to me, so.
And that's part of the one seventy-six, I think.
This, twenty-nine. See, the twenty-nine eight hundred was sent to me as a separate invoice, but is it included here?
Yep. All that should add up to the one seventy-six.
Jeff, did you see the other invoice that she has that?
I don't know that I have.
Well, it's, it's a copy of this, which is a separate, that's a separate invoice.
Is this what you got sent?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, all right. That's the breakdown on the Graves. Twenty-nine eight.
This is twenty percent of a contract for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. So is that, this, this invoice does not clearly state that that twenty-nine thousand eight hundred is part of this.
I asked you, look, I don't know that that's a part of that.
I, no, but here, given that to me is like, this is my invoice to be paid, and I don't believe that it is.
I wouldn't pay anything from them until it gets through the council and Rogers looked at it.
So are you guys approving the twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand?
No, we're approving the one seventy-six.
Okay, so this doesn't actually go with it then? This is just all I need to be paid. Okay, so approval for one seventy-six, one ninety-nine to be paid to Graves. And I saw that you were getting those from? Um, I'll have to check, I think it was just a copied party on that, but I'll go back and look at that email to see where.
Probably do if she's got this, I probably forward it on to.
Yes, I move.
And Melissa's.
So this is one I need to look at.
Yeah, that one you have in here with this, but it, I mean, I believe this. Yeah, that's, that's a separate invoice, but I'm not sure where that's coming from, but.
One seventy-six, we'll have to tie them over. Going again.
Now focus. I'll see if I can revisit that.
Okay.
Okay, item number two, Bill Brown, we have two seal failures. We pulled the pump, uh, last week, quote for repair on that is twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents. Crazy amount for a rebuild on a pump. But again, we looked at the price of buying a new one, and it's more, and the warranties aren't nearly as good. I think it's one year versus three year on the, the rebuilds, which is counter to it if it's helped me, but it is what it is. So we'll have that one to do if you approve it. Also, the one that, that's in there, uh, that we replaced it with, pulled up a seal failure also. We think that one may be covered under warranty because it's a relatively new one.
That was within the last year.
What are we pumping with?
Yeah, you're, you're pumping on the one that's.
Get somebody down to the hand pump.
No, you're pumping with the one that has a seal failure.
Good lord.
Okay, so we're just, we're biding our time now. It has two pumps in it, okay? You've got one, and you've got a redundant backup, and they alternate back and forth to reduce wear. So the one that has a seal failure, we're hoping we can get the, the one repaired, put in, pull the other one, and get it repaired as a replacement.
Who are these pumps?
They're flight pumps, is the name of the manufacturer, and they're supposed to be really, really good, but what we're finding out is they're really, really expensive.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that we, these are the pumps that actually pull the sewage up and lift them.
Yes.
Lift stations, and push them into the force mains, so, yeah, they're, they're kind of important.
Yeah.
And as we, we found out before, when they go out, bad things happen.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't want to do that.
Well, I move to approve the repair pumping board.
There goes that one percent.
There goes the one percent?
There you go.
All in favor, so.
Aye.
I've had too much mental.
All right, uh, electric department would like to purchase thirty-six poles for a grand total of twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-four, uh, from Bridgewell Poles.
Not what we can do.
So what, um?
We have a lot of poles that need repair.
Why, no.
A ton.
Um.
And we're to the point now where if, if we get IMPA, which is on down the list, if we get them doing the ones that we absolutely.
Can't.
Can't do, we can make progress on some of these that we can.
At seven hundred and fourteen dollars a pole, it doesn't sound too bad, I guess, for a nice sturdy pole.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Call my favor.
Aye.
Why another pump?
This is at the wastewater treatment plant?
You just got a pump.
Yeah, this, this is one that is just absolutely trashed over there at the wastewater treatment plant. Bill's having to manually clean it pretty much every day.
Yeah.
And it's, I can't remember if I sent you guys a picture of that or not, he sent me one, and it's not pleasant, so.
Especially in the field.
Yeah, but that's, that's another one that I'd recommend that we go ahead and do.
You know, we, uh, not to throw more on your plate, but you could delegate, we should have us a list of our pumps all over town, and just, I mean, it's mind-boggling.
And when they've been replaced.
It's mind-boggling how many pumps we have fixed in the last.
When U-Mac came in and done lots since then.
And not only for the board information and future boards, but just for, for, for everyone.
Well, and warranty information, and, and being able to track exactly what's under warranty and what's not in it.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be good to have.
Instead of depending on the manufacturers and say, oh, yeah, by the way, that's on warranty.
Wondering why rates have to go up, I mean, it's every meeting, it's twenty-five thousand, ten thousand, twelve thousand, thirteen thousand.
I know, I don't like to do that.
What was I move?
You've got enough money to pay for it.
Well, we're going to do a rate increase, I know, I know. Well, we do some reallocation to South Market, or Howard, that helped a little, but yeah, I know.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
It's, uh.
We're writing some of the same things.
Not, not pretty on there, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, I, oh, did you guys move on that?
Yes, we did. I believe we did.
Yeah, I, I move on asylum. Did we move on it?
No, we did not. The wastewater plant, no, we did.
I, I'll move on that.
Okay, second, the wastewater plant pump repair.
Aye. We do have this in wastewater improvement, which is basically appreciation, it's been there for years, and there's money that could be there, sixty-seven thousand.
I think you just spent it.
Well, yeah, it's right there, pretty much, but.
Just let me know.
New Hope, questions and answers, this has been an ongoing thing with, with New Hope and, and Structure Point regarding property lines and setback lines and that kind of thing, and, uh, Brian Hallers has, has been coordinating with Ken on that, and he proposes three things. Number one, establish Market Street property boundary as the edge of the existing roadway pavement. Number two, or B, establish six-foot building setback on all property boundaries adjacent to residential lots, and then C, reposition building setback line along Michigan Street to align with the existing property boundary line as show, as shown, and, uh, there, there are probably some variance, uh, ordinance variances that we'll have to do. Nick, is, is that something that we prepare on the town side?
So usually they'll file a petition for variance, and then it gets approved by us. And we're getting a lot of this where they're wanting us to do all the petitions, and that's not something we typically do, we consider the petition and adopt it or grant it with an order or not.
Okay.
But if you say you filed a petition, what are you looking for?
File asking stating what you want, so like he's indicating an email, but.
So they need a petition asking for these three things?
Right.
Because that's what we've been trying to get to that answer.
Right.
For them to do.
They do a petition stating that they're asking.
But we've been asking this for like six to eight weeks.
This properties, this is the property that we're addressing, this is what we want done, and then lead will review it and either grant it or not.
So where are we at in that process?
No petition's been filed.
Well, that's the first type that's been asked for.
That's kind of, kind of what we're doing here, I think, with, with this email thing is, you know, we ask them to give us a list, hey, what is it specifically that you need? And the response back to us has been.
It's A, B, C.
A, B, C, established market street property, blah, 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 six-foot setback, that kind of thing.
But that's the first time I've ever seen that.
Okay.
As far as what they want.
So, so this is their petition. I'll be it not formal.
It's an email, but yeah.
Uh, how would, how would you?
We get asked for it in a formal format.
But if they got that to us in a formal format, you.
So we have to advertise that we're considering that, just like we have to do with anything else, give ten-day notice to the paper indicating that this is being considered, that we're going to address it at a public meeting, yada, 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 which is the same form that I just gave.
So who's going to tell New Hope?
It's.
Well, now it's been requested, so we can just set a public meeting.
Okay, so we can use this here to set a public meeting and get this done.
Right.
I know it's been going around a while. Okay, good.
So do we need anything additional from New Hope?
No, we just need a public meeting to consider the request to amend the zoning rules.
All right, so a public meeting will be set to.
So can we advertise?
I gave you that on the Smith thing.
Can we advertise?
It's the same form.
Welcome.
Does this need to go through, and this is not to go through something like we have done it already, and it needs to be raised?
That's why I was telling you that there's a couple of things that need to go through zoning and go to the board.
Right.
That's one of them. We have to advertise a zoning meeting that with the, uh, Smith you guys already did at your prior zoning meeting, and there was one that you worked on.
Yeah, Smith's ready for advertising it to the board at this point. This one needs to go zoning first.
It's got to go through zoning first, and then there's another one that has to go through zoning first, but I forget whether it does.
So you need to set a zoning.
Zoning meeting, not a public hearing, just yet.
Right, we need a zoning meeting to address it, and then we need a public hearing for the board to consider the zoning recommendation.
All right.
What was the deadline, was there a deadline on that?
Well.
I was supposed to give them an answer tonight, you know, day or night.
I mean, I think the board's amenable.
Yeah, but we have to still go through zoning, right?
You guys created a board of zoning, so it has to go through.
So there needs to be a zoning meeting at all, let's see.
All right, so first of all, you got to do a zoning meeting, then you got to do a public meeting.
I got to have, I got to advertise it ten days in advance of that public hearing, though.
So it'll be another month probably before we're able to.
Maybe not for that long.
Where are we, we're on the thirteenth, so.
Get a zoning meeting set.
God, I can't even know what's happening.
And we could advertise it, but we have to get a zoning meeting. And if we have to have a special meeting today, we might have to set a public hearing, just a special public hearing, you know?
We might as well do the school thing at that same zoning meeting.
Yeah, Woody, when you were asking about the deadline, you just wanted to open it at the end.
I've got.
I know, just put it, just tell them.
Uh, let's see, right now we're on. Yeah, we got this one done, that one done, and that one, and that one, and we're on this one right now. Oh, we did that.
They hadn't given their evidence as to what the issue was, which I still don't think they have.
Jeff, are you going to respond to Brian, or do you want me to?
No, I'll do it.
Will you make sure that Mr. Bosley's.
Oh, yeah.
And Morgan is on copy.
Yeah, and, and what I'll tell them is, we, we can't act on a decision at this time.
Well, I, I don't know that I would say that.
Just say it's going to be set for, to be reviewed by the zoning board, and then upon their recommendation, the town can add.
Tell them the town's favorable.
I would try to put as much positive light.
Council's favorable, we're just waiting on.
We, we have to go through the process.
We set a zoning meeting, and then once it's done.
And, you know, you've got favorable from Ken, you've got favorable from the town, and now we're going through the documentation there, and that's it.
Okay.
Otherwise you know what we're going to do tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm already planning on it, so.
Kind of critical.
Yeah, it, it'll be fine, because it is what it is, I mean.
IMPA list pending.
IMPA list pending, I have a list here of eleven. I mentioned, uh, from IMPA, they provided this list to us of the eleven pole replacements they were going to do. Our guys are going to go through that, so that we're not just cherry picking the easy ones. If anything, we're going to give them the ten or eleven hardest.
Like with transformers and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, 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 so we get the most bang out of the buck from them that we can, if they follow through with this, so, you know, we'll, we'll do the process, and we'll, we'll see what happens, so we can do. All right, uh, we had a sinkhole on Maple for sewer repair. Uh, we went ahead and we did this, Graves was there, they did work. We're going to try to roll this into the existing sewer rehab grant, and let me explain a little bit about what we're doing there. We've got, I think, four sections that the town had already repaired that were listed in the original grant. So we're trying to work with Ogra to see if we can't, uh, document that we've already done those as emergency repairs, and try to slide in a few other areas that we know need some fixing, that we've identified through the televising and that kind of stuff, and I think we can do that with, with this issue on Maple, too, because that is.
What was the cost of that, thirty thousand?
No, that was the, uh, your, your thing in O'Ryan's, was costing about.
Yeah, what was the cost on this one?
This one I don't have to bill for yet, that's through Graves. So, uh, they had it done in half a day.
Wow.
Maybe that was about twenty-eight thousand.
No, it was something different, I just can't put my brain on it right now.
Jeff, may I add a comment to the overpiece? So we do have to submit a request modification to Ogra to make changes to the scope of that project, so it's not a given.
Yeah, no, it's not, but we're going to, we're going to try.
Best of the continued.
And Roger just said he wanted to wait till after all the televising was done before that request is put together, and we can.
Yeah, that way we have a comprehensive list instead of a piecemeal, which makes sense. Okay, uh, number ten, I know how much you guys love doing this, and I do, too, this is the execution of an indot LPA contract, and there are two pages worth of instructions to do that. Please pull out a blue pen for your signatures.
I have a blue pen.
I have one.
I'll share it in this effect after the change.
Okay, now I will send that around, who has the blue pen? Okay.
Not me.
And we have to make sure that we have all our EIEIOs in line with that. Blue pen, signed and date, all the dates have to be the same, the attest needs to be the same day in blue pen, and then I will forward these on to the proper people. You know, make sure Brandy gets a good copy, too, for her files here. The original has to go to NDOT, but we'll make a copy, or we can do a second if we need to.
You just sent the signature, always.
Yeah, all the board members need to sign, Brandy needs to attest, and they. And try to do them small, because I still don't think they put enough spaces on here, did they?
Do we need a motion to approve that?
What was it?
The LPA contract.
Oh, yeah, you got to give authority to sign it or whatever.
We're all signed.
So you got to.
I move.
I'll second.
And then Moody, this is, for your approval, this is Bill's application for his IEM permit to discharge. Just need a signature on that, and yeah, you probably better do it in blue, too. Do you guys want to make a motion on that one?
On what, on Bill's?
Yeah, Bill's application for his.
His IAN certification or whatever.
We need to make a motion on the seventh.
Yes, we did. Parked motion, and I seconded it. I'm sure you voted aye.
I did, got you.
So you need a motion on the WWTB application for Bill?
Yep.
Well, I'll move it.
Second.
Hi, Dave.
Hey.
I made down now, you're officially here, so you can sign.
I leave.
Tell.
I'm a favorer.
Aye. Aye.
Woody, Woody, are you going to sign by yourself?
Got to sign both places. All right.
What you want to do with this, Jeff, there definitely ain't going to be enough sign here. You want me to do that on just one line? Yeah, yeah, if you can.
That's small.
That's going to be a, well, there's not enough lines. No, and they never make enough lines.
But they send it back five times if you don't have the same.
It's print.
Or if you don't use blue print. Yeah, I'm going to, that's what I'm saying, I mean, it's, you know.
Okay, I would have copied it before the service sign, and then I could have used that as an addition. We all had your.
All right, that's signed.
This is done?
Both pages, yes. Okay, do we want to take some action, and then we can discuss the uses?
Bottom machine. But before you get to that, did want to update you, the emergency repair down on O'Reilly's, that has been completed, the lift station is operational. Keith and Roger, they were over there until midnight Wednesday, I think, and Brett and Scott were there, too, making sure they tied in the power and all that kind of stuff. So it was a late night for those fellows.
So now we have Family Dollar and O'Reilly's going to a forced line that's going to college?
The north of O'Reilly's, and O'Reilly's and north of there are coming into the lift station. Family Dollar is fine.
Okay.
They were not affected.
Okay, good.
O'Reilly's site, BJ's is kind of north of there, feeding into a lift station with a grinder pump, two-inch force main out to college. That, that's all then, we're just waiting for the bill on it. We estimate, or Roger estimated about 30, so.
Another pump, yeah, another pump.
Another pump to.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it was interesting, they did find, Roger was a little bit concerned, because when they initially started tracking us, they weren't finding solids and refuse. Well, when they opened up that clay tile, they.
They found.
No, mine was packed full, I suppose.
It was acting as a accepting.
Accepting, also.
Anyway, probably more information than you need to hear.
Have to accept it on a warm summer day.
Another email that I sent out to you regarding Structure Point and South Market Street, can advise that, and I know this is no surprise, but due to the archaeological work that they're going to have to do, and also due to the historical remediation because of the adverse effects from that particular committee, we'll probably be getting a little extra bilge from Structure Point for those services, but they wanted me to give you a heads up on that, so that it's not, you know, sticker shock when, when we get it.
What did we find in the archaeological dig?
All I've seen were, it was listed as artifacts, objects, but nobody has been able to tell me, oh, yeah, we found a piece of lumber, we found an arrowhead, or, and it's all right there at the location of the Goss house. So it's one other corner. Southwest is Goss house, southwest corner.
On Market.
While the jail was down, we used it as the dispatch center for the jail.
That was a dump.
The basement, next to prosecutor's office.
Oh, okay.
That would have happened.
Oh, okay.
Anyway, I'll be interested in what they, they dig up, or what they do with it, so.
So what did you say about this?
Oh, and, and, yeah, then you can do your thing.
So do we want to make a motion to have either Brandy or Nick amend the salary ordinance?
Well, Brandy'd be the one to amend it, the clerk treasurer does that.
I told him I would take care of it, and then.
So, yeah, I move.
Second.
Well, we can discuss it. We discussed any of that in this meeting, and we wanted to.
Do what?
I said David wasn't here, he was.
So you guys had voted, or you guys had talked about transferring somebody to a different department?
Yeah, John, I think it's going to wastewater.
And then amending the salary ordinance to address the new departments, and who's in what department, and new positions.
Now, we advertising, we, did we talk about advertising?
We are advertising for another.
We are going to advertise for motor vehicle general laborer.
Okay.
That position will be open. They'll get something out to the paper this week.
Randy, we're ready for you.
Which one?
Left, go on the left.
This one?
Yeah, give me that, yeah.
Just two copies?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're all going to love it, man. Here are May and June's activity reports for the entire department. It also has listed the uniform crime reports, so it gives you an idea of what kind of reports we have responded to. And here's a copy of special orders. Yes, that was the, where they attached this. General orders 2020-1 and 2020-2, which refer to COVID-19 response by our officers, and they're dated, the dates that they were issued for all of our personnel to follow. New face masks, a more permanent type of being, have been ordered, they're on their way, but they take a disposable cartridge, and they take an N90, an N100 cartridge, which, if you, if you know anything about it, or if you haven't, there's kind of a chart here that has different descriptions. The M95 is what's been recommended. These N100 cartridges will filter out a lot more stuff for the guys. So it'll be used not just for COVID, but they can be used for organic vapors, sulfur dioxide, hydrogen chloride, chlorine, and the list goes on.
But they were purchased as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic?
Yes, they are in the COVID-19 supply list.
Jeff, either you and I, or we need to establish a protocol like the county has for gathering invoices, because the town received that $81,000, whatever, odd dollars. And so things that had to be purchased as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic can be reimbursable. It can be used to stock up or stockpile, but if we had expenses that were a direct result of it.
Reimbursement type deal.
Yes, and so we need to gather those and start submitting them to the Indiana Financial Authority.
Yeah, Randy's been submitting them to me and putting, listing COVID on them, so it's started a separate file, so.
Everything that I've ordered in response to that has COVID-19 supplies listed on it, whether it be hand sanitizer, or hand sanitizing wipes, or the masks, paper masks.
And it had to be after March 20th, I believe.
And everything we ordered was after that.
Okay, whenever the pandemic was.
Yeah.
We did apply for and receive the grant of three new portable breath test instruments from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. And they're also going to give us a gas that certifies those machines to be accurate. It's, it just, they're not court evidence machines, they're just portable breath tests to give you an idea of whether or not a person has alcohol in their system. They also test drinks, but those things cost about $400 apiece, and we received three new ones this year. So we also received the request for what we needed on the radars, and I submitted a request for two additional radar units. I have two that are not very good, last year they gave us two, and a handheld LiDAR, so I've requested two more radars to replace the ones that are older and not working very well. FirstNet had updated the AT&amp;T tower behind the jail last month, if you didn't notice, phone problems. It is now FirstNet capable, which means to the common person, it doesn't mean anything on your service. You should show improvements in your service, because they did add 5G service, but they added the band 14, which is dedicated for first responders only nationwide. So I upgraded our phones at $0.99 each, so that they have FirstNet capable phones that we can put the FirstNet cards in, and we're still working with that. I'm also looking at a push-to-talk app that they have for when our radios go down. The other night in a storm, we had one that's site trunking down here, and we're at the mercy of the state police when they decide to come out and fix it. And if it's not bothering them in that area, then it's not going to be a high priority. We've had sometimes four or five days for that to happen. Our evidence computer that stored all of our evidence program crap, it was purchased in 2009, so we got a good life out of it. Randy Cleaver was in town, I caught him, he came down, took the hard drive with him, he was able to recover all of our data off of it, which was a very good thing, and brought us another computer. That computer is costing us about $1,050. We have five other workstations that we need to replace, as I've mentioned before, because we keep getting pop-up notices that after October 2020, office is not going to be.
Oh, yeah, you kind of have.
Work more anymore, and that's where most of our reports and papers are on. So Randy had upgraded the courthouse's computers recently, and when he did that, he purchased a large quantity. I think he got you guys the office in here on a deal, and maybe down to utility office, though you need two?
It was already updated.
I think all ours is still the old stuff, too, because I know that.
So we might look at how many you need, too, but I need five for the office. But he's got those at about $900 each. This first one was more because we had to put a bigger drive in it to hold all the evidence information.
Did he get Surface Pro, or what's he doing with it?
Huh?
Is that a Surface Pro, is that what he got?
It's a Dell, I don't. It works, that's what I was really about.
Are you looking at like a hard drive to back, to back that?
We do have that, and it wasn't functioning at the time, but we did have it set up for that, and it's supposed to be programmed back to do that again. We have an external hard drive that we back it up to. Axon is the company that makes these tasers. They also make car cameras and body cameras now, and they are really nice, they've been pushing me, but that doesn't work. They have these body cameras that are nicer, they come on automatically, they deploy your taser, they come on automatically, if you buy the option that knows when your gun comes out. And that doesn't just turn on mine, it would turn on everybody's body camera that was within 50 foot of us, because it Bluetooth's the signal out that something's going on. So it activates everybody's cameras. The other nice thing about it would be, you can share that film with the prosecutor, you can share it with the defense without taking the time to download it. Currently, we're having to download it to a thumb drive, take it to another computer, and copy it to a disk, and then take it out to the prosecutor. And recently, he called me and said that the discs I sent him didn't have anything on them. Hopefully, we're getting that corrected, but I just don't see that this system, it is very nice, but he's asking for $12,000 for the first year, and I told him that I didn't think we could cover that, but that I would present the information to you. I just don't think we can justify the cost. When these are working, it just takes more time for us to do it. Yes, it would save time and save us money in the long run, but as far as labor, but not cash.
What is it after the initial cost, then?
$12,000 the first year, and $7,000 every year after that, up to five years. Now, that is for eight cameras, we currently have six of these. And the other side of that, these new cameras, would be that every officer would have a phone app, that if I go to Steve's house and he had a theft, or he seen something, he videotaped something with his phone, I could send him a link of that app, and it would upload his film right to the evidence file for that case. So it keeps everything together for you, instead of gathering it all and trying to copy it to us.
So do you have to actively forward it to the prosecutor, or will it do that on its own?
Yeah, he would have access to it on his own.
So then you would have to copy everything, and then he could just forward that to the defense?
Anytime he wanted it, he could, yeah, download it.
Are you offering to purchase that for the police?
No, I'm just asking.
No, but that's a good idea, I might approach the prosecutor about it, but I doubt he'd come up with $12,000 a year, or $7,000 a year.
But the part about it pinging, I used to charge ping to every officer that's within that radius, that protects you guys substantially as far as having body cameras on and still correct.
It also has a hookup, so when you turn your lights on in the car, it automatically turns the camera, body camera on, too, same technology, Bluetooth signal, so it would turn everybody's on, so.
But those are like add-ons?
Though that, turning on with the lights, that was figured into this amount.
But the guns?
The gun thing, it's a, it's a little magnet that fits on here, and when the magnet comes off, it automatically sends the signal, so that is an add-on that I didn't figure in. Property inspections, 1117 East High Street has been cleaned up, it is corrected, and they did a good job. They put up a privacy fence, so a lot of that might have moved to the backyard where you can't see it, but it is within the standards of the ordinance. Property on 41 South of 36, which was the old.
Recycling place.
Recycling place, which I noticed there was an ordinance that prohibits that kind of business in town, that was never enforced before.
You think, you think good thing's gone, right?
Yes, he is cleaning it up, but he's not moving very fast.
And it is, at least now, it's simple.
He is getting cleaned up, and he's got a big dumpster up there, and I noticed that big dumpster's full of aluminum cans, and I think they're just shoveling them in there. And I, he probably doesn't have access to it, but I don't know if we could take the backhoe down there and smash that stuff up, so it'd help him get it up out of there quicker, scoop it out of there. He's not the property owner, he's the guy that was renting it before, and he's not.
Hasn't the price of metal gone up a little, could we want to take it?
Well, that would been the, the solution, is if, if we have to do it, that we collect it, we.
We can charge him for the cost of the renting and the nuisance.
And that's part of the ordinance, so.
So the property owner have him, has directed him to do that? So does the property owner have him, has directed him to do that, or is he just...
He has, and the property owner told him to get it done before his name ended up in it.
Two ways.
Yeah. So, yes. I got a new property added, Michigan and Pennsylvania Street. Neighbor's complained, and there is some dead trees down there and a lot of overgrowth at the corner, southwest corner. However, it's kind of ironic that the person's complaining, pays the bills on another property that we have on East High Street that I'm always writing up. But since it's next door to them, it's a big deal now.
Long as they don't apply to everybody.
We also, and this is something I didn't get at, but we did re-sign a new memorandum of understanding between Rockville Police Department and North Central Park Community School Corporation, providing school protection officers. It didn't change any. Brandy has a copy of it on file, and I can send it out to the rest of you, and then if you guys are interested in reading it. The school is planning on opening on time, and I'm not really sure what they're gonna do about masks yet, on or off. But I advise them that if they want them, the officers will wear them in the schools. They're not gonna wear them whenever they're up in traffic, they got in the middle of the intersection and away from people, but...
They're working with the local health department to come up with a reunion.
And I think they're all pretty close to it already, so.
They're, it's going to their next meeting.
And that's all the info. Well, I do have one car in the shop, the front end, it's one of the old two thousand thirteen Ford that's having front end problems.
Are you gonna stop by and pour, or do they walk back then?
The Ford Motor Company and the Ford Foundation are two separate entities, and some people have pushed forward not to make police cars anymore. They're not gonna do that. They have already responded that they will continue making police cars and making safe vehicles for the police department.
About time somebody stood up.
Well, and I, I tell you, just from my point of view, police officers know that a majority of citizens appreciate the police department and what they do and their work. It's a very small minority that's being very vocal right now nationwide, and some sources really feed on that and spread it even more.
Speaking from a personal standpoint, I have an interest in defunding the police.
Well, and we understand that. We understand that. It'd be a sad sight, anarchy. But any questions for me?
Oh, your second portable radar thingy on it.
The sign?
Yeah.
On the trailer?
Well, no.
Oh, the second one. It's put together, I think Doug was on vacation, so he hadn't got, he hadn't got back yet to put it up. But they're gonna put it on Anderson Street.
It's actually on my pitch.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
So it's, it's ready to go up. It's going down there. The trailer's been moved off of Harrod Avenue, and I had a couple of residents wondering when I was gonna move it back. But...
Where, where's he at?
I moved it out on thirty-six at the old Coop. Across from the depot, and...
But hey, I'm driving slow on Harrod Avenue.
But this same citizen said that sign worked. They'd like to have it back, and that there has been less traffic on that street because of the twenty mile an hour speed limit. Less people are using that road because of it, so.
And it's some police on it too, so.
And we have been. We've been sitting, well, you can see where we've been sitting down across from the tent porch.
Really slow, but you can do it. And you don't have to press the gas pedal.
No, you don't. Police cars do it fine, so I know everybody else's vehicles can do it.
And if I can, then you can.
I just avoid that street.
Well, that's what most people say.
Oh, we appreciate it, 'cause it'll last longer, I hope.
You're welcome.
Especially if you're driving a heavy truck.
Just doing my part.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else?
And I have just, something that Brandy had said. I don't know if, if you guys run on a server for any of your computers. Do you have backup servers and everything? Okay. So we don't, and so we hooked up with a gentleman out of Terre Haute that has a system called Carbonite that you can install on all of your laptops and everything, and they automatically back up all of your files for you. So we didn't have to invest in that server.
Online?
Our backup system.
Is it all online, the backup then?
Mm-hmm. Like every, every day it'll go through and it'll give me a little orange or green dots if the folders and files have been backed up. And if there's ever a problem, they also provide some tech support too, which has been really nice.
And, and those are for most applications. I've been looking for some that were long proportion specific because of all the problems with the data leaks, that we've got a lot of sensitive information that can't be released. And so, so we're not liable for paying for it, but...
Yeah, 'cause we shopped around for a few different solutions, and they were the least expensive and have provided great service. So advise others that they might have their stuff in their office.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I have a mutual picture.
I move.
Second? All paid.
Aye.